August 26, 2020, school committee meeting in order. What do you say we take attendance, see who's here? Mr. Mayor, are you with us?
Yes.
Ms. Saros, are you with us?
I, yeah, sorry.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair, are you with us? Okay, we'll come back. Ms. Dolan, I believe you're with us?
I am.
Thank you. Mr. Kukora, are you with us?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chafe, are you with us?
Right here.
Okay, so Ms. Cobb-Lamair. Technical difficulties, do we see her?
Looking.
Okay.
Not on yet.
Not on yet.
Yeah.
Okay. We can wait a few minutes.
On box. You in the other side?
Ready?
Ready. Okay, Ms. Lamair, are you with us?
Yeah. Got her. She's with us.
Ms. Lamair, Ms. Lamair, you with us?
I'm here, sorry.
Excellent, all right, okay, we can proceed. All are accounted for. Let's see, call to order. First, second order of business from the superintendent and staff, the update on the fall reopening plan.
Good evening, everybody, thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight, we want to provide you with a, an update on where we are with our reopening plan. We have several slides to show you. We've made good progress and we continue to make good progress and we're getting closer all the time to, sorry, having answered the questions that we're, we're trying to address with reopening. Sorry, I'm just trying to get myself to the right slide deck here.
You see it?
Yeah. Okay. All right, so again, thank you. Tonight, what we're going to do is we're going to talk a little bit about where we are with communication, what people can expect for the upcoming week, next week, and as we move forward. Going to do a, just a kind of a brief overview of health and safety, but there's also been some updates. So our nurse, nurse director, Jeanne Alfasi, has been with us tonight to do that as well with Mr. Lee. Little bit on facilities and operations, where we are with, specifically with building assessments. And then we will give you an update on both the full remote program and our hybrid learning plans. And whoops, and again, that website will, has all of the most recent and up-to-date information on it. Braintree Schools.org/reopening. So we are going to be doing some sessions tomorrow with our staff. Similar kind of breakdown is what you're seeing right here. And then on Tuesday, September 1st, we're going to do three more rounds of parent sessions based on grade level. We've yet to set a date for special education, but we will, we will schedule that for sometime next week. It may be more of a presentation with us, with question and answers as opposed to just a straight question and answer session. So part of what I want to just make sure that I say before I forget to is that there may not be a lot of opportunity for questions tonight, because it's obviously it's up to the chair, but we do have an executive session. So I just want to make sure parents know that those times are available on Tuesday, the 1st. Just as everyone should know anyway, hopefully people know that we did do a survey for students and families. We focused on grades pre-K through 8 in the survey that went out the other day. They are due tomorrow. In, we have received quite a few responses, but we still need to, we still need to make sure that we get as many responses as possible. So if you haven't had a chance to take the survey as a parent, please do so. And you do need to fill out the survey for each of your children. And that response is due by, I'm sorry, due by 9:00 PM tomorrow. Grades 9 through 12 and students ages 18 through 22 who are in the transition program will be surveyed. Will be coming out by the end of the week, hopefully by tomorrow. If you do not receive the survey, please contact your child's assistant principal. So, so far, and this was as of 2:00 this afternoon, this is the breakdown for pre-K through 8. We have approximately 24.2% of respondents, sorry, are looking to go remote, full remote. 71% looking to go with a hybrid plan. And then in specialized programs, 3.4% and the red is indicative schooling request. So as you can see, the majority of our students are planning to return in our hybrid plan, which we are doing pre-K through 12. The, we, we were a little bit surprised with the remote numbers, a little higher than we thought it might be, but we'll be talking about that this evening in terms of what that plan looks like and what, what parents and students can expect with full remote. This is the breakdown by grade level of students who are going full remote. Grade 2, a little bit of a spike in grade 2. You can see, other than that, in pre-K, it's fairly evenly distributed across the board, which makes it a little easier to implement. Those not returning and going to be doing full remote by location, as a percentage of the number of students in the actual grade level, you can see by, by school, pre-K through 8, the percentages of, of students who are planning to go into a full remote versus in-person. Again, fairly evenly distributed with some, some, a couple of outliers on both ends. So with that, I'm just going to roll into health and safety considerations. I will turn it over to Jim just to get us started.
And I will get started, but obviously Jeanne Alfali's on the call as well, and she's much better qualified than I to speak at some of these pieces. But this is a slide that was actually presented before, and it really speaks to some of the preparation that has been done by the working group Health and Safety that had been functioning under the steering committee. Part of their work has been the design of certain protocols for a variety of circumstances that might arise in the schools with, with COVID. So at, in the very near future, we will be distributing to all families our protocols for all of these different scenarios. Like what happens if a kid comes to school and is symptomatic? What happens if a staff is symptomatic at the school? What happens if a student or staff member tests positive? So this is work that has all been done and closely aligned with guidance from the state. The Health and Safety Committee, working under the supervision of Jeanne Alfali, has, you know, put these together. And again, this will all be coming out to families shortly. Next slide. And this is where I introduce Jean, because there have been a few changes to this. This, this relates to the DESI guidelines about protocols and some symptoms that people would be on the lookout for. But Jean, if you don't mind jumping in, talk about the changes, as this is also a slide that previously had been shown.
I'm, I'm happy to talk about this. These are the symptom checklist for COVID-19, and this is what we're going to ask families and staff to go over. Families to go over with their children, staff to go check out by themselves on a daily basis before they come to school. These are the list of symptoms. So it's a fever, but the fever has been, is now defined by the CDC as 100, where it was 100.4 prior to that. A cough, not due to other known causes such as a chronic, a chronic cough, maybe related to asthma. Difficulty breathing, a shortness of breath, new loss of taste or smell, a sore throat, a new headache not associated with an underlying condition, muscle aches and body aches, nausea, vomiting and diarrhea, fatigue when in combination with the other symptoms, nasal congestion or runny nose, not due to a known cause such as allergies, when in combination with the other symptoms. So it is a pretty extensive list of symptoms. It's also very similar to many other illnesses, just like the common cold or the flu. Allergies can mimic that. So it's, it's very, very difficult to actually pinpoint. It would be nice if it was a virus that we could say, yes, I definitely know that that is, I definitely know that that is COVID and you need to go home. There is, there are some viruses like that, that fifth disease is one that I can think of right off the top of my head, that a student will come in and they look like their cheeks are slapped, red slap cheeks, and they have a lacy, lacy rash around their body. Definitely easy to pinpoint that. Not at all easy to pinpoint COVID-19. So we will be asking all staff and families to review this on a daily basis before coming to school.
Jean, does, does stress cause any of these? I'm asking for a friend.
Well, absolutely, headache for one thing, headache one thing, that's perfectly something that could be caused by stress and is also a symptom of COVID.
Thank you.
You're playing into it, Jean.
Yes. Keep going, Jean, ignore them, please.
Yeah, don't ignore them. Ignore them.
You've got to ignore them.
So if, if you're one of those folks who had, who was sick with the symptoms of COVID-19, whether you've called in or you got sick during the time that you were at school, you will be asked to go home and get a COVID-19 test, a PCR test. The turnaround time is usually five to seven days. Students and staff members will need to quarantine at home until they get the test results back. So you're going to have to stay home, even if you are feeling better, until we get the test results back. Now, I presented this at subcommittee, this next bullet was written wrong. But if your test results were negative, so you did have a test, your test result was negative, and the person is feeling better and, and is fever-free for 24 hours without fever-reducing medicine, the student or staff may come back to school. That's somebody who was sick and who was test, tested and was negative. So if you weren't tested, if you chose not to get tested, then you would have to stay home for 10 days, the same as the isolation period if you actually had COVID-19. So if somebody tests positive, positive test for a student or staff member would result in home isolation for 10 days and until 24 hours have passed with no fever and improving symptoms. Now, once that positive test has been identified, that person who has, is positive for COVID has been identified, contact tracing will begin, and the tracing will start 48 hours before the positive person shows signs and symptoms and up until that they were isolated. Elementary and middle school, now this is one of the changes, this is one of the changes that DESI put out, but this is a change that the Health Department and Health Services feels that we want to keep the way it was before the guidance came out. The guidance that came out recently from DESI said that a close contact would be anyone within the six, six-foot radius of the person who came down with COVID-19 for up to 15 minutes. So we had presented, and we strongly believe that the cohort in elementary and middle school, that cohort of students and staff would be considered close contacts because of the length of time that they're together and, and the possibility that it could be more than one day of exposure to that person. For instance, if it was on a Wednesday that, that Johnny came down with it, and Johnny was in class Monday and Tuesday, that would be that 48-hour period and therefore may have been able to expose those children during those two days. So it wasn't just, it wasn't just a four-hour period, it was an eight-hour period that they were with them. So in abundance of caution, we really feel that we should include all of those people in, in the close contact. It will also be less disruptive to the educational process because everybody will be quarantining together. Everybody will be doing the same, they can go right into remote learning and not be six people coming in, six people going out. We'll, we'll keep them all together. The same goes for the high school because of that extended exposure. They'll be in classes up to 50 minutes with the person, potentially with a person who is positive for COVID-19. And unless we can guarantee that they were absolutely nowhere within a six-foot radius, we feel that it is better to quarantine the whole classroom of students. And the next is about masks. So we just wanted to make sure that there was some information out there for folks. All students and staff on the brain, on campus at Braintree Public Schools will be required to wear a mask, unless it's determined, determined that it's unsafe for them to do so. And this should be a discussion that takes place with the school nurse in the buildings if someone can't wear a mask. What masks are not appropriate for school use? Bandeas, gaiters, necks, which are considered the necks. Masks with vents, and the reason that the mask with vents aren't appropriate is because the mask with the vent is made so that your air goes out that vent, and the purpose of wearing a mask is, the purpose of wearing a mask is to keep your air inside that so you're not spewing respiratory droplets out into the air. So we don't want to see those in the school building. Along with, we don't want to see masks with inappropriate language or messaging on them either. Mask breaks will be provided for students when they are able to be more than six feet apart and preferably outside. Now, it's important for families and staff to start wearing their masks and practicing with them. And many people can say, well, hey, you know, I go to the grocery store, I wear my mask, it's not so bad. Well, you probably aren't in the grocery store for four hours. So it's important that people practice now, not wait till September 16th when students go back to school, and gradually increase the amount of time that students and staff are wearing your mask so that you feel comfortable when you're in school. I know myself, I have many grandchildren and they play here on the beach. And as of recently, probably about the last week and a half, we've had them out there with their mask on when they're playing and, and they have been adjusting very well to them, I'm happy to say. Oh, before we move on to the next slide. We often get questions about face shields. And I don't like a mask, can I wear a face shield? A face shield is extra protection for your eyes. That's the purpose of it. So it's to keep the virus out of your eyes, to keep it from coming into you. And it's also, in the hospital, if nurses are working with patients and there's body fluids spewing around, we want to make sure that that doesn't get in your eyes as well. So a mask, I mean, a face shield is not an alternative to a mask. You need to be wearing a mask. A face shield could be worn on top of a mask if you would like, but it's not. The intent of a face shield is to keep your eyes protected. That's it. So if we didn't have enough to be concerned about, enough on our plates recently, one of the things, there's a new guideline, a new recommendation for an immunization, and that is to get the flu vaccine this year. And students are, must have the flu vaccine by December 31st. Now, this is really important because when you think of what happens when we get the flu, it will be more difficult to discern who has the flu and who has COVID. It will also put a strain on the healthcare system because we're dealing with COVID and now we're dealing with people who have the flu, who, who oftentimes get very sick, just like people who get COVID. So we want to make sure that we try as best as we can to take that off our plate this year. So the more people that we have vaccinated against the flu, the better off we will be. So we will strongly recommend and encourage everybody to get the flu vaccine, and it is the requirement for our students. And it's also, one of the things that we have to do with our remote students is even though they're not coming to school, we are still responsible for them. So that recommendation and that requirement for that vaccine is something that we still need to follow up on and make sure that people get that. Now I bring your attention to eastern incline esophilitis, which is called triple E. It's a mosquito-borne virus. We are seeing it at this point in time, and it goes in cycles, and this happens to be one of the couple of years cycles that we're seeing it. And because we will be outside when it's appropriate, it's very important that people protect themselves against this. Most of the time mosquitoes are out in the early dawn hours and dusk, but they could be out during the middle of the day. So it's important that when you send your child to school, that you've made preparations and have applied mosquito repellent before they come because we would like to get children outside as much as we can and when space allows. And along with that, to make sure that they also have sunscreen on and the exposed skin to protect them while they're outside as well. We want to make this as safe, as safe a year as possible as we can here in the Braintree Public Schools.
Thank you, Jean. Moving on to update on facilities and operations. So as part of the survey we did with families and students, we asked the question about whether or not families were planning on having their child take the bus to school. You can see the breakdown on this. This is actually fairly consistent with a survey that we did back in June. Right now, as it stands, 72.4% will not use the bus. Again, this is based on 1,900 respondents at 2:00 PM this afternoon out of about 4,000. So we're kind of halfway there. And 27.6% do intend to use the bus. That breaks down this way by school at the elementary level. You can see for kindergarten students, and that would be specifically really for inadequate, Flaherty, Highlands, Hollis, Liberty and Morrison. This is, these are raw numbers, the number of students who intend, intend to ride the bus. At the middle school level, East Middle School, about 150 students intend to ride the bus. And at South Middle School, it's a little less than that, probably around 120, 125. Our facilities assessments continue, they are ongoing. I want just to remind everybody that we did do the energy savings project, which actually finished and had a baseline assessment was conducted and, over the course of the summer. But that project finished at the end of last fiscal year. That project covered all schools, the exception of East and South Middle Schools. It included a, an assessment of all heating and ventilation units within our buildings. The units were assessed and they were repaired if they were in need of repair. It also included installation of boilers and many other energy-saving, and as, as well as water, water savings equipment like china within our bathrooms, sinks. So it was based on, and really the goal of it was to gain energy savings to, and save us money on utilities. But as part of that, all of our equipment was, was assessed and repaired. It was also, that's a lot of S's in that assessment I'm just noticing, I think that's a couple too many. It, it also provided us with an installation of an energy management system. So all the information, all the new systems that were put in were actually tagged and they are in the energy management system. We are able to see when units are on across, across our school system, everything from ventilation units to, to boilers, and it gives us full control in a remote way, which is very helpful. South Middle School was not part of that project. Obviously, East is a brand-new school, so that does not need to be included at all. But, and we do have a balancing report on East as well. But Bala was the, is the engineering company that is currently looking at South Middle School. They are doing the same thing that Naresco did as part of the energy savings project. They're assessing all of our equipment and identifying what needs to be repaired. They are also going to be doing the fresh air exchange or air exchange testing as well, that they should be done at South this Friday. And they are also working on Hollis, and Hollis should be done by this Friday as well. So in terms of timelines for the actual airflow testing, we are, we are projecting right now that we will be complete by the, potentially by the end of next week, but certainly no later than the end of the following week. We will have all those tests done and the results will be available. We'll make any kind of needed repairs. The, people have been asking the question about what is the standard? The standard is the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Engineers, ASHRA. They are, their standards have been endorsed by the American National Standards Institute. And what we're following or what these assessments will be comparing to and following is the ventilation for acceptable indoor, in air quality. Those standards and the calculations for how, how those are calculated by classroom for the measurement of airflow are within a spreadsheet that, that they provide. These engineering companies will be putting the data into that spreadsheet and producing the results in a standardized way so that it's, it will be easy to understand in terms of what the standard, what we're comparing it to. So THB Company is currently doing the testing and balancing at Braintree High School. They will be handling additional elementary schools. And then Bala, they've done South, they will be almost complete with Hollis, and then they will be, also be moving into elementary schools. So we have essentially two companies on board right now to do the work. And they will, we will be splitting them up between elementary schools to accelerate the timeline. We are finding some issues in different pieces of equipment at Braintree High School. We have been working with our contractor, both, both with Naresco, who came back on site yesterday. They are working with Solotech, who, who does a lot of HVAC workforce and they know the system. Naresco will be bringing in subcontractors as well to help us make those repairs. And that work will be ongoing and should be completed within a couple of weeks. But we don't have a definite timeline on that. We will know more by the middle of next week as to what that looks like. There also, ASHRA gives some additional strategies to enhance airflow within our, within our schools. You know, they have an entire website dedicated to this and you certainly can find it pretty easily. They do recommend things like equipment adjustments and operational hours. So opening up our unit vents wider to introduce more fresh air, running them longer, not, not having them automatically shut off at certain points of the day, but to maximize airflow to keep them open, operating longer, which we can control through our energy management system. And again, the goal of just increasing outdoor ventilation. So where we have windows, which is the majority of our classrooms at most of our schools, with the exception of the high school, the, the windows would be available is another mitigation strategy. We have been inventorying and repairing windows. We'll continue to do that work as we move through the next few weeks. We could also introduce portable air cleaners with filtration. We've identified filters that we, we, we will be purchasing, and that is another way of enhancing airflow and air quality. One more point I wanted to make about that, but it's not coming to me right now. So, so that's really basically the overview of where we are on all of that work. And again, I just wanted to make sure that people understood that we are not picking random numbers on this. We're going by national standards. So with that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Lee once again, who's going to give us an update on both our full remote program and as well as our hybrid schedules.
Hey, Dr. Hackett. So obviously, there had been a lot of questions about what does the full remote program look like? And with the survey that was put out to families the other day, we added descriptions of what the elementary program and the middle school program would include. At the elementary level, we are looking to have our Braintree Public School teachers, certified elementary teachers, working with groups of kids whose families have identified them as fully remote. So these teachers and these students would work together, you know, every, every school day there is, following the same curriculum that their hybrid peers would be experiencing when they came to school and work remotely with their teachers. So it, it would be separate from the perspective that it would be different teachers who are only working with remote kids and remote kids who work directly with those teachers, but it would be our curriculum. It would be our teachers who would collaborate with their, their peers who are working in the hybrid setting to make sure that it's consistency in terms of instruction and what is delivered. It would include both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And as we had mentioned previously, we would identify points in time where a family that had chosen the full remote option, but had changed their mind and wanted to go back to a hybrid model or even more, if that's where the district was, there would be transitional moments where that would be possible. So, you know, to try to answer some of the questions that people have, it would be Braintree Public School teachers. They would be working with groups of, of students who have been identified as full remote by grade level. We, part of the survey is to determine how many students in each grade and at each site would avail themselves to this. Based on that, the grade levels would either be site-based or district-based. So if we had a lower number of second-grade students, for instance, who are looking for a remote program, full remote program, it might be a district-wide grade 2 remote program. So those numbers have yet to be determined, so we can't give concrete answers on that at this moment in time. But that would be the program at elementary. At the middle school, it is slightly different. However, it again utilized- However, it again utilizes Braintree Public School staff and certified teachers. I believe later in the presentation, we're going to show the hybrid model of the middle school, but in essence, in the hybrid model at the middle school, those students come to school two days a week for the morning, and they experience a small number of classes in that morning. What we would seek to do for the families that wanted a full remote program at the middle school level is to have a teacher teach the remote group during the, the mornings where other students would be in school, working with teachers, following the exact same content lesson that was being taught to those kids who were in person. But then, when those, that is done, those remote students would re, re, re-engage with the rest of their class and all the remote sections that are available in the middle school program. So again, we can talk about this a little bit further when we get into the middle school hybrid, but if you recall, the majority of the middle school program is remote, fully remote. So these full remote students would be taught by a remote teacher when their peers were in person, but for all the other classes, they would return to their peers, return to their normal classroom teachers, and follow along in the remote program. So this again, would keep them right in line with the curriculum being taught, but you know, to all students in the, in the middle school program. Again, it would be taught synchronously and asynchronously, very similar to what the hybrid kids would experience, but again, from a fully remote perspective, grades, attendance would all be taken. And again, we would identify points in time where if a family had changed their mind and wanted to return, that those students would be able to transition back into a hybrid or full in-person model, depending upon where the school system is. So those two programs are a little bit different because the programs at the elementary and the middle school levels are different. But again, it is our Braintree Public School teachers, it is our curriculum, and students would follow along with all of that. At the high school, the program would resemble much more the middle school full remote program than the elementary program. When we show you the high school program, you'll see that during the course of a week, although students go to school two days a week in the morning, they really only attend one class in person, you know, so one class for a course in a week is what they get when they are attending the hybrid program. So similar with the middle school model, we would have a teacher, a Braintree Public School teacher, teaching that cohort of kids the same lesson, the same content that the students in person would receive, however, in a remote fashion. And then those students would, you know, go back into the remote sessions of the week with their peers and their normal teachers to continue along with the curriculum and to fulfill the experience. So again, this is a chance to make sure that they stay with their peers, they stay with their normal classroom teachers. The only difference would be when their peers were in a class in person, they would be taught separately by a different teacher, the same content that was being delivered in the, in that program. So similar things apply, grades, attendance, synchronous and asynchronous instruction, and again, points in time where if that was not what they were really seeking to stay in, that we would have transitional moments where they could return to the hybrid or a full in-person model if that was available to us. So for parents asking about the remote, full remote options, those are what we currently can tell you about at this moment in time. As the numbers continue to come in, Dr. Hackett indicated we got about fifty percent of a response rate for the elementary and middle school level. The high school survey will go out later. We'll finalize numbers after we get all that data back and be able to give more concrete answers as we go forward. But in terms of the program description, that's what it looks like. So in terms of the same survey, also asked about, you know, technology needs, you know, twenty-one percent of people would need to use a V P S device, and our tech department has been preparing themselves to make sure that every student that needs one can get a device. Close to seventy-nine percent of our students have a personally-owned device that they would be able to access as they work remotely from home. So that, those numbers are relatively consistent with what we thought it would be, which positions us somewhat favorably in terms of moving forward. In terms of distribution and B Y O D network access, there are going to be appointment sign-up forms that will be coming to families who need to pick up a V P S device for learning or to bring a five through twelfth-grade student's B Y O D device to campus to set up on our network. That is something that needs to be done by families. You know, it takes very little time, and our tech department is very good at, at taking care of this, but you do have to go through some type of process to make sure you can access our network. They, the events will be held at Braintree High School between August thirty-first and September fourth, in a well-vented area that will retain social distance guidelines. Anything that we need beyond that would be determined later. Events would have multiple dates and time slots so that families can choose a time that's convenient for them. If you are picking up devices, more than one student, it will be possible to pick them all up in one time slot. So we're trying to make it as seamless as possible for families to get the equipment that they need to make sure that they are ready to go when the school year begins. The next section, it really speaks again about the hybrid model. At the last presentation, we brought these numbers up just as a context in terms of why we think the way we do. On the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards, their recommendation about synchronous time for students at the elementary time, their recommendation is two hours per day, and at the middle and high school levels, they recommend three-point-five hours a day. So, you know, what we have discussed previously is what we believe, and that is we do not want students staring at a screen for six hours a day. So the type of instructional activities that students will receive will be both asynchronous and synchronous. Lot of questions from families, rightfully so, about what will the cohorts look like and when will my kid be going to school? In terms of cohorting, one cohort will be for those families whose last names begin with A through L E. So again, A through L E, and that cohort would be attending schools on Monday and Tuesday. And that is same across the district. The intent is to keep families together, to allow families to plan best for getting their kids to school and, and their own work schedules. So on Monday and Tuesdays, district-wise, students whose last names begin with A through L E would be attending school. Conversely, on Thursday and Friday, those students whose last names begin with L I through Z, that, those would be the days that they would be attending school. Obviously, we will make certain adjustments for students who have a different last name and live at the same address, and we have the capacity to do that using our student information system. But just so people can begin to plan forward, as I know, you know, daycare issues are really critical for folks, th, these would be the days that your children would be going to school based on your last name. Just to update folks on the elementary plan for hybrid, there have been a few changes. You know, receiving feedback from teachers and, and some, some of the feedback that's come into the office from families, we, we have made one slight change, well, more than one slight change, but the, the primary change is we had talked about bringing a whole class in on a given day and splitting them up into two rooms. There are certain advantages to that, but the, you know, more feedback we receive, what we have moved towards is taking that class and dividing them into two cohorts, Cohort A and Cohort B. You know, Cohort A would attend school on Monday and Tuesday, based on the alphabet that I, you know, was shown on the previous slide. Cohort B of the same class would come to school on Thursday and Friday, again, based on the alphabet that was on the previous slide. So this is an example of an in-person day for both cohorts. So on Monday and Tuesday, you can see Cohort A comes to school, and they go right into the learning with their teacher. The, the example given here is reading. You'll see that there are a couple of breaks built in for movement and, you know, the removal of masks. Obviously, it's going to be very challenging for our students and staff to be wearing masks for four hours a day, so we, we instituted those breaks to kind of get them an opportunity to do some serious breathing. Day continues for them into a writing activity, and then later after the next break into a math activity, at which point they are dismissed. What you can see for that Monday and Tuesday is then after lunch, both cohorts come back together in a remote fashion, so that in the afternoon of Monday and Tuesday, Cohort A and B are together, working in this case on an asynchronous Science or Social Studies lesson, followed up by synchronous remote learning special, with some other learning activities that again involve both cohorts. And then both cohorts are together at the end of the day for a meeting with the teacher. So you can see the level of, for an in-person day, if I'm Cohort A, how much synchronous time I get with my teacher over the course of the day. You can also see for the Cohort B that they're actually engaging with their teachers in the afternoon of their non-in-person day. Again, conversely, on Thursday and Friday, it's Cohort B's turn to come to school. They go through a very similar program that Cohort A did when they were in school in the afternoon. Again, involves combining them back together to do activities, whether it be in science and social studies, or some synchronous work with specialists, but ending with a synchronous meeting with their classroom teacher. So that would be the in-person days. And this would be examples of what that remote learning day would look like. So on Monday and Tuesday, if you recall the previous slide, Cohort A was in school. So in the slide in front of you now, Cohort B is remote. The light blue indicates Cohort B. So they would begin their day with a synchronous morning meeting with their classroom teacher to kind of get them started, but then they could move in, into another synchronous meeting, not with their classroom teacher, but with some specialists, whether it be a reading or math specialist, or an activity related to reading or math, you know, which could be both synchronous or asynchronous. They get breaks like everybody else, but then they go into specials, which would be synchronous in nature. They could also be working on some asynchronous activities in reading or math. As has been mentioned before, the district has purchased some software that allows students in math and in English, you know, specifically to, to work independently with some software that adjusts to their skill level, so that allows for that. After another break, there could be another synchronous meeting with support staff for social, emotional learning, building principals, other folks in the building to make sure that they have synchronous connection to the school. But then, as previously mentioned in the slide before, in the afternoon, they are back with their other classmates, going through their, their afternoon activities together, both synchronously and asynchronously. If you jump over to Thursday and Friday, you can see now that Cohort B is in school and Cohort A is at home. Their morning schedule looks very similar to Cohort B's home schedule as they work through both synchronous activities and asynchronous, asynchronous activities. Again, a lot of the thinking here does relate to those recommendations about two hours of synchronous time for elementary-age students. We actually, and these schedules go above and beyond that. And again, in the afternoon of Thursday and Friday, they regain their cla, you know, go back to their classmates and do some activities together. On Wednesday, which is a, kind of a different day in the week, there's an intent to have synchronous meetings for the entire class in the morning, and some, some synchronous work being done and asynchronous work being done during the course of the day up until what would normally be a lunch break. And, you know, but we have kind of envisioned as the opportunity for staff to be collaborating in that Wednesday afternoon time slot. There's a whole lot of planning that goes into making this all work, to making this all coherent, to making sure that the lessons are appropriate for both synchronous in-school time and out-of-school time, and asynchronous in-school time and out-of-school time. So those Wednesday afternoons will provide staff that opportunity to, to be together and work collaboratively to make sure the lesson planning is, is as it should be. Slightly different than the other grades one to four schedule is the kindergarten schedule. We had talked previously about having a cohort in the morning and a cohort in the afternoon. This really mirrors that and improves upon it slightly. You know, some of the feedback from teachers, I, but you know, particularly as it relates to the elementary schedule, Michelle Gaffney from Flaherty was instrumental in getting some of that work done in a better fashion. As it relates to kindergarten, it's Krista Jenks over at Man Adequate that had an active hand in really moving us in a better direction. But what you can see is on Monday and Tuesday in the A M. session, Cohort A is in school. So their schedule in the morning session would be to show up to school, get right into a reading and writing activity. You'll again see the breaks that we think are critical for young, young kids as it relates to just moving around and, and, you know, taking a break from wearing a mask. They go into other activities like math and science and social studies before being dismissed. On Thursday and Friday, in-person would be Cohort B, but in the afternoon. So Cohort B on Thursday and Friday afternoon follow a very similar schedule to what the Cohort A on Monday morning experienced, but they're doing this on Thursday and Friday afternoon. Again, reading and writing breaks, in-person learning with math workshop, science and social studies before being dismissed at the end of the day. And so what this allows for, I'm, he's going to the next slide, just to see if he can go back a slide. What this allows for, no, too far. What this allows for, on Monday and Tuesday afternoon, the classroom teacher is available to work with that Cohort B P M. session remotely and do work with them directly. It is a half-day program at the kindergarten, so there is nothing that Cohort A in that afternoon would be doing. But at the same time, on Thursday and Friday morning, the teacher is available to work with Cohort A remotely before the arrival of Cohort B. So this is a schedule that makes a lot of sense for a number of different reasons. You know, even from a operational standpoint, it assists us with transportation, it assists us with cleaning, and it really is well-thought-out, and I appreciate the feedback from Krista and Michelle in putting it together.
Just before we move into the middle school, I just want to mention, Jim had mentioned transportation. So as we had said, Friday, tomorrow, we will have, I'm sorry, tomorrow, Friday? No, Friday, two days from now, we will have a draft transportation routing plan, which will allow us again to meet the, the minimum requirements provided by the state, which is more than two miles away from the school for elementary students through grade six. Once we have shown how we can do that, we'll have an understanding of what our resources look like. So as we, a lot of questions obviously around what, what's the start time, what's the end time for students? That's going to be dependent on, on transportation. The goal is to get everybody to all the elementary schools at the same time, at the same time we normally get there, and get, and have them leave at the same time as we normally have them leave, but we may need to stagger. So there could be some staggering between schools. We also are looking to create a separate, independent kindergarten run, instead of, of bringing students to Man Adequate through their home school, which is what we have done in the past. They get on the bus, they go to the home school, and then we run a special run from their home school to Man Adequate, where we are intending to see if we can do a separate kindergarten run that would just bring them straight to Man Adequate. There will be some kindergarten sessions at, those students would then get on the bus with the elementary students, and they would arrive at their home school at the same time. So in terms of start and end times for the school day, bus pickups, we will have more information on that towards the end of next week, but we wanted to make sure that you certainly tonight at least knew the cohort schedule and what that looks like by alphabet. So that's one. We're getting closer and closer all the time, and we will keep you posted. So just to give you an update on the middle school opening plan?
So again, we had previously presented a middle school hybrid plan. This kind of follows up on that. Again, there have been some changes. One of the pieces was moving its science into the in-person instruction and to the modification of the P E. block. We, we do believe that students are going to need a block of time to get out, take a mass break, and to move around. Middle, middle school-aged students developmentally need that movement. It's critical to their ability to stay focused for the remaining part of the day. But again, hearing some feedback, we also are looking at other options to include in that block that could allow for additional academics and support type of activities to fall in that P E. block as well. Almost all the classes in this middle school schedule have the ability to provide synchronous activities. There are a couple of exceptions, which I'll try to point out, and very similar to everything else that we'll talk about, the cohorts attend Monday and Tuesday or on a Thursday and Friday schedule, and Wednesday is, is more of an asynchronous approach to the academic classes. So this, this slide excludes Wednesday, just to, you know, be a little bit clearer in terms of what we're talking about, but this is an example of a sixth-grade schedule. So obviously, if you had a seventh or eighth grader, it'd be slightly different, but this is just to give you an indication of what a day might look like. You know, the, this cohort individual, obviously, their last name began with A through L E, so they are in school on Monday and Tuesday. And you can see homeroom begins around seven fifty, and these, you know, the actual minutes are still a little bit fluid, but not too fluid in terms of trying to make sure that we are getting all the time in that we need with students. But then they, at eight fifteen, go into their class schedules. And so as had been previously discussed, the focus while they're in-person relates to the four classes you see listed in yellow, English, math, the P E. block that I briefly described in the previous slide, and then science. And so this, this cohort is in school again on Tuesday morning, and you can see they're experiencing the same classes as they did on Monday, just in a slightly different order. So in the afternoon of Monday and Tuesday, you can see there's a social studies period, and then, you know, the last period, art and health, you can see that would be asynchronous, and then music, which is asynchronous. And some of the, the need for certain classes to be asynchronous is the ability to schedule all the specials we need to in the middle school program. So as I had mentioned, with the exception of those asynchronous blocks at the end, there's opportunity in every one of the other blocks for synchronous instruction to occur, and that was a real priority for us moving forward. So for this cohort on Thursday and Friday, they are remote. They are working from home, and you can see the courses that they would be They are working from home and you can see the courses that they would be taking in a remote scenario. On Thursday, for instance, music would again have the opportunity for synchronous instruction. Math would in that case be asynchronous, but then social studies and art and health would be synchronous again. Science and ELA in the afternoon would be synchronous again. Friday, science in that particular version would be asynchronous. The other classes on Friday have the opportunity to be synchronous. So again, seeking to maximize the amount of synchronous instruction possible. This is what a middle school program would look like. In terms of Wednesday, it is more of an asynchronous model on Wednesdays. This is just an example of what a remote day on Wednesday would look like. They would have an ELA block in the morning, followed by some electives, math, resource and academic support. Again, this is all asynchronous, social studies and science. So, you know, there would be other synchronous connections on Wednesdays, you know, whether it be guidance, whether it be building administrators. But in terms of the academics, it would be delivered in an asynchronous fashion on Wednesdays at the middle school. Terms of high school, there's been some slight modifications to what had previously been presented. Really almost structural in nature in terms of why certain blocks fall where they are. This is relatively identical to the one that you, those of you who saw the last meeting would have seen. Again, the two cohorts, one is in blue, one is in pink. Monday and Tuesday, that cohort is in school in the morning and you can see they go through the schedule A, B, C, then D, E, F on Tuesday morning. So on that cohort that's in school on Monday, A, B, C are in person. D, E, F are in the afternoon and they are, you know, they have the opportunity to be synchronous with their teacher in that regard. But that is while they are working from home. Tuesday, D, E, F in person, A, B, C, remote from home. But again, the opportunity is there for synchronicity. The changes in terms of Thursday, previous, what are you doing to me?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Killing me. Previously, Thursday, again, went A, B, C, D, E, F in consultation with some teachers. Tori Violet and Justin Pesejo at the high school in particular had some really good feedback in terms of how the rotation of blocks really affected teachers' ability to plan effectively and sequentially in their lessons. So rather on Thursday than A, B, C, D, E, F, we come back to Tuesday's D, E, F, A, B, C. And what this allows for is a closer connection between days when they would see folks in the hopes that that would allow teachers some more opportunity to sequence their lessons in a better fashion. So Thursday's A, B, C, D, E, F is replaced by Friday's D, E, F, A, B, C. And then Friday takes on Thursday's A, B, C, D, E, F. So that was really to allow teachers to do a better job planning their lessons in their weeks. But the intent is the same. Students, you know, receive during their in-person time, all of their courses at least once in person. The afternoons have the opportunity for synchronous instruction to occur. On Wednesdays, there is some teacher-directed, there's some teacher prep time, but then there are also some synchronous activities that would come from the building administration in terms of guidance, SEL and the like. There's an opportunity in the Wednesday schedule to have clubs and perhaps advisories meet on a schedule that makes sense at the high school. And then after lunch, you can see there's office hour opportunity for teachers. There's also a PE block in there and it was explained previously, but just to make it clear again, most of our students would have five academic classes in their schedule so that sixth block could be filled by PE. So when you look at Monday, for instance, A, B, C, D, E, F, one of those periods theoretically would be PE. But we do have students who fill up all six blocks with academics and so there's no room for that PE class. So for those students, that population of students, they would have a remote PE class that would meet on Wednesday afternoons, either in an X or a Y block that would fall in that Wednesday afternoon time slot. So again, the intent is to maximize synchronous instruction in a way that makes sense for teachers and students. And this is the current hybrid schedule at the high school. You can see that the start time of the day, we're still pinning it back to the normal start time at BHS, which is 7:35, which was a slight change. I think the initial presentation had that down as eight. So that's been modified as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lee. Just before I send it back on to Chairman Devin, just want to remind everybody that on Tuesday, September 1st, next Tuesday, there will be three parent sessions for about an hour apiece. Grades spans pre-K to four and then grades five to eight and grades nine to 12. So if you haven't had a chance, if you didn't get a chance to sit in on the last sessions we did, certainly welcoming you to sit in on these and we will be reviewing much of the information again, but ask, answering questions as best we can on what you have seen this evening. And we will be setting up a special education meeting. All that information will be coming out soon. So with that, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I think we would open that up to comments or questions on the school committee. Is there anyone on the school committee that has a comment or a question at this time?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kors, you have the floor.
Through you, thank you. A couple of comments and then a couple of questions, if I may. First, I want to really thank Jean and the work that her team does. I think the presentation tonight was excellent. We saw it earlier in subcommittee. And I really appreciate the work that the nursing staff does and will continue to do as we work through all these plans. So thank you again. And then I also want, I think we've seen a much more robust look at what remote learning will look like. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into that between the committee and Mr. Lee and Dr. Hackett. So thank you for that. My question is on the, on the fact that there'll be kind of multiple teachers involved between in-person learning and remote learning. Is it going to be a team approach? I guess I just want to understand that a little more because I think it, it makes a lot of sense. I just, I'd like to understand how that works a little more.
It will ultimately be dependent upon how many families avail themselves to the full remote option. You know, we have teams of teachers in our buildings currently who work collaboratively on lesson planning and coordinating, you know, what an individual student is doing on a daily basis. We have models within schools right now that kind of mimic that. So once we have a better sense of how many students are going to be involved in this program and how much staff we will need to support them, given their schedule, I can give you a better answer than I can give you right now. But the intent will be that that teacher who is working with those kids in a full remote setting would be in direct collaboration with the classroom teacher so that they can deliver the same content on a daily basis that they would have received while they were in school.
Excellent. And just one follow-up question. On the asynchronous side, I know, I think the last presentation showed a lot of the software that's available. It would be helpful if we could just maybe see a little more detail on the asynchronous learning, because I agree with you. I think, you know, meeting the standards and exceeding the standards, which it looks like we're, we're planning to do now. It'd be helpful for parents and also us to understand asynchronous, like so. We all understand that that's not, you know, students aren't learning, losing a learning unity, but just getting it to delivery a different way.
And certainly, we can come back with additional information about not only the software that we use, but the type of asynchronous activities that we would be using.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kors. Are there any other comments or questions from the school committee?
Mr. Chair.
By all means, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. With regard to just going back on what Dr. Hackett said about the testing. So the air quality or the testing that's being done at the schools will be completed by the end of next week, which is September 4th. Is that correct?
Ms. Lemire, with 268 people on the call and probably others watching on YouTube, I'll not, I will not commit to an actual drop-dead date because I experienced the fact that things can happen. That is the intent, but likely not the end of next week, but into the middle of the following week or near the end of that week. And again, we're going building by building. So as we get the reports building by building, we will be able to analyze the results and release the information as it becomes available.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Koppelman.
Thank you. I have a couple more. Let's see, okay. As far as the, the number of students in a cohort, can you tell me what that will look like at each level, elementary, middle and high school? And, and how many students are we looking at in each building for elementary, middle school and high school? And how are the cohorts put together? Thank you.
So the cohorts are alphabetical and the split is A through LE and then LI through Z. You know, we have taken a look at all the schools and that split gets us as close to 50/50 across the board as we can get. So, you know, not at each site would be 50, exactly 50/50. But that particular split, looking at all the schools in the district, gets us as close as we can to 50/50. Again, the intent is to keep families together so that if you have children at multiple different levels, that they are going to school on the same days and they're home on the same days. And again, we would make adjustments for, you know, students with differing last names who live in the same house because we have the ability to track that as well. In terms of what it means, in terms of numbers, it would vary by each school. But if you think of any classroom or any school, in essence, it's about as close to 50/50 split as we can make it.
Okay, so there'll be no leveling for middle school or high school?
There'll be no leveling at middle school. The high school program is different than the middle school program, so those levels remain. It's part of the broader program at the high school, which is more diverse than the program at the middle school and has implications in terms of next steps for students when they graduate, you know, specifically around college application process and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemire. Any other comments or questions from people in the school committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to piece number three, which is reports from the school committee, our subcommittees. Our first subcommittee will be Policy and Education, which is chaired by Ms. Dolan. Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we met earlier today and talked about a number of things, one of which was an update that Jean F. Sally provided to us, similar to what we heard this evening in terms of the health standards. We're also looking at getting some of the draft MASC policies, or I should say boilerplate policies from them and using those for certain COVID-related topics. One of which would be the use of masks. So we're going to take a look at their boilerplate and make some modifications as a committee on our own and then come together as a group next time and work on that to customize it for Brain Tree. The other things that we covered in our meeting were the reopening in general. And so, you know, we heard all of these updates as a collective this evening. And then the final item, which very hopefully Dr. Hackett is bringing up, is the update to the school calendar. So I will let him talk about that.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. So we presented this to the Policy and Education Subcommittee Committee tonight. We would like to ask the school committee for either for first reading, consideration of first reading. But if, if there is, if it's the will of committee to approve this, we would also appreciate that. So as it stands, we know that there are 182 days for staff. 180 of them are student days, two of them are professional development days. With the commissioner's decision to reduce the student day from 180 days to 170 days, those 10 days were given to us to be able to use for professional development. They are, it is expected that those 10 days will be front-loaded prior to the start of school. The commissioner also gave the directive that students cannot start school any later than the 16th of September. So what you see in front of you right now is that professional teacher development would go from 8:31 to 9:03 that first week. We will, they, we will have Friday off before Labor Day, which is the 7th, as we have done historically for many years now. And then it will return, staff will return from the 8th, 11th, and then the 14th and the 15th will be the final two days of the 10 days for professional development. The first week, right now, the week is September, I'm sorry, August 31st, is going to be remote. We have a lot of plans in place. Mr. Lee is working with directors and also with principals and other administrators to pull those plans together. Yet to be determined on the following days in terms of remote or in-person. The first day of school would be the 16th. And then we go into October, there's one, one day, holiday on the 12th. And then in November, there is the election on the 3rd. So there would be no school for that day, as would normally not be school on Election Day. It's a professional development day. And then on the, on Veterans Day is the 11th, it's on a Wednesday, always on the 11th, but it's a Wednesday this year. And then vacation week for Thanksgiving would begin as it always has, a half-day. And then Thursday and Friday would be the vacation break. Then in December, we're proposing that December 21, 22 and 23 be full remote learning days for all students pre-K through 12, with the idea that while we may have some staff in the building doing some work through that, those remote days, we would be able to really get people out of our buildings, give us two full weeks to assess, to clean. And if we are in a point where we could make a transition or looking to make a transition to hopefully bringing more students in for more days or that kind of transition within the actual schedule and program, then that would also give us an opportunity to, to look at that and do any kind of fiscal moves that we might have to make during those two weeks. This calendar also allows us to just, we're asking for approval through December 31st. At the grade out, January through June, we're not asking you to approve that portion of the calendar. It's just there just to show you what it historically traditionally looks like. Our plan would be to come back to you mid-November, late-November to start the discussion about what does January through June look like, knowing that everything changes very quickly in the environment that we're in. We think that just setting the calendar through the end of December is the right thing to do so that we can make adjustments as we move forward if needed. We've put the traditional holidays in as well as the vacation weeks. And I would just say that, you know, depending on what happens and how this goes, we may be looking at those vacation weeks differently. That it could be possible for us to look to have those be full remote. We wouldn't go in-person because we know that certainly families and teachers have plans. But that could be an opportunity for us to do some remote days if for some reason we needed to. If we have a particularly bad winter, for example, and we lose a lot of in-person days, because right now we only have, there are only two, we'd be looking to make those, those days up somewhere else to make sure we maximize the number of days we have students coming in, in person. In this calendar, if all goes to plan, the last day of school, if, if five snow days were to be used, we always build in five snow days. The last day of school would be the June 22nd. If we have no snow days, it would be June 15th or, yes, right? Yes. So we also still have, because as I said earlier, we have two professional development days that we, we have every single year. And then we have the 10, we have, we have used one on November 3rd, the election day, but we still have one remaining. That professional development day has not been scheduled in this calendar. We will continue to kind of monitor that and figure out, working with the BEA, where we might put that later in the year. So if there are any questions, happy to answer any questions you have. If there's appetite for approval of this, that would be great. Understood if there isn't and do it as a first reading and we'll bring it back to you.
I have a question.
By all means, Ms. Saros.
The, a few years ago, when we got hit with all those storms, every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we were knocked out. If that were to happen, does it have to go to the union about making those remote days, full remote for everyone?
Well, everything is still in negotiations with the BEA right now in terms of the entire plan. That would be a conversation, but if we would treat, if we treated this and thought about this in the same way that we've treated prior years, then those days would be, would be snow days, which would be built into, into June, as indicated in June. However, we might have some other opportunities to make those days up too. So we want to, if we are still in this, in the hybrid mode of two in-person days, then we want to make sure that we're maximizing those in-person days because that in-person instruction is critical for, for learning as we know.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions on this?
Mr. Chair?
By all means, Ms. Cobb-Lemire.
Hi, Dr. Hackett, is there any discussion about what will, there's a number of holidays that fall on a Monday or Tuesday or, you know, any day of the week, I guess. Is there any discussion on how you will make up for those kids that are in cohorts from Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday? If a holiday falls on a day that you're supposed to be in, in school?
Right, so good question. We, fortunately, we don't have to deal with Labor Day because we're not going to be starting yet. So that's one Monday that we normally have to deal with. We do have the October 12th holiday that that would be a day that that Cohort A would miss in-person instruction. We do have the teacher workshop day on November 3rd, which is the election. Our buildings are being used for the election. Not all of them, but they are being used. So that would be a professional development day because we not want, you know, that traffic crossing. We will be actually also just to say that the, all the spaces within the buildings that will be used for voting will be sanitized at the end of the voting session. We'll be ready to go the next day. That's been a conversation I've had with Mr. Casey, town clerk. And then we have the 11th, which is the Wednesday, so nobody misses in-person learning on that day. So in this scenario so far, we have the two days that the Cohort A has missed. And then the week of Thanksgiving, that's two days that Cohort B would miss, which, you know, if we're just, just in terms of equity or being equal, I should say, that does wash itself out. At this point, I think that we're good through December. We would not be looking to make up those days. But as we, as we move forward into January through June, we, if we needed to make some adjustments, we would make adjustments. What could happen, what the concern would be, would obviously be if we start losing some days due to snow, then, you know, if they start falling Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Fridays, then we're going to have to have a further discussion about how to make those up.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Cobb-Lemire. Any other comments or questions from school committee members? Okay, in order to, shall we say, vote on where this is, just what I would think, half the calendar, I don't have a problem with doing a same-night action on this. But I would ask, is there anyone on the school committee that has a problem with same-night action on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd prefer not same-night action. I'd like to look this over a little more.
Okay, I fully concur with that. Then this is a first reading, and we'll bring it up at our next meeting.
And right now, you are scheduled for being still for Monday, which is 31st.
Okay, moving on to the Finance and Operations Subcommittee update. This is chaired by Mr. Kors. Do you have a report for us, Mr. Kors?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
By all means.
So we met earlier this evening as well. Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if you muted me. We met earlier this evening as well. We went through the reopening plan. We got a few updates on the bus schedule and things like that. We'll continue to focus on what Dr. Hackett spoke about, which was facilities and things related to facilities over our next few meetings. So I won't go through the things that we've already heard earlier this evening, but most of that was what was presented to the Finance and Operations Committee earlier today.
Okay, thank you for your report, Mr. Kors. Let's see if I can take this off so I can at least be heard. Let me explain something. We will be doing two things now. We will be making a motion and going through a roll call vote to enter into executive session. It's a consideration to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategies of the contract negotiations in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on legal position of the school committee as declared by the chair. So what we'll do is we'll take a motion to enter into executive session, and then we will adjourn. Now, we don't have to come back from this because we don't have to come back to make any type of a vote based on what we discuss in executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session. I have a motion, a second. A motion is second. All right, let's go roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemire?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kors?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chaff?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this school committee meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
I have a motion. I'll consider that a second. Roll call vote. Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lemire?
Aye.
Ms. Dolan?
Aye.
Mr. Kors?
Aye.
Mr. Chaff?
Aye.
And the chairperson votes aye. This school committee meeting is now adjourned. You'll be getting the information as to how to enter into executive session. Thank you, everyone.